All right, are we, everybody hear me? Okay, thank you Ingrid. All right, Shelley told me that she is going to be 15, 20 minutes late this evening. Steve Davis just texted me and let me know that he wouldn't be able to be on today for the work session. I don't know if he's going to be there for the regular session or not. But today is November 19th and this is a work session on code of conduct. And we had gone over this a couple of weeks ago, maybe not last time, maybe a month ago, I think, Charlie.
Last meeting.
Last, oh, that's the last meeting, geez. Okay, well, I haven't seen you guys in a while, missed you. So Charlie, you're kind of, we had a subcommittee that had met about this. I think Charlie, Tony, Rick, and I think Shelley was on it. I'm not sure, maybe you were on Apollo. But a lot of this is a byproduct of that, so since Shelley's not here, I wasn't sure if Paul was on the subcommittee or not. And Charlie, you've done a lot of the wordsmithing. Do you kind of want to kind of reconvene us back on where we are at, what we, the changes you've made, maybe? And what we need to address yet this evening?
Sure, Tony's got his hand up, I don't know if you want to.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Tony, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. No, I just sent Charlie and you all some my proposed code of conduct, which is no code of conduct. As I told Charlie before this meeting, anything that you do to attempt to keep me or any other council person from speaking is a violation of the First Amendment, it is volitive of our city charter, it is illicit and could be met with litigation. You know, the six or seven of us aren't going to be here in a few years. And I imagine I'm going to change this as soon as I have the majority. But again, I'll listen for an hour and a half, Davis is smart, maybe not to participate, but I'll listen, but I think we're wasting our time. Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Charlie.
Yeah. So I think where we dropped off last time is on bottom of page six or nine on executive sessions. So I'm going to pick it up there. I'll give everybody a chance to get with me. Shelley sent me some written comments, I didn't get any from anybody else, which I didn't expect, but I'll kind of run through those if one Shelley gets on, I talked to her individually. Most of them are wordsmithing issues, so I think she and I can talk about those. And then I think the procedure that we kind of talked about the last meeting, just remind everybody of, is I'm typing notes and comments and changes. I'll do another draft, which I'll send to Carl for, you know, to word smith from a legal standpoint. And then probably, and then Carl and I can meet, figure it mechanically, it has to happen. I'm assuming there'll be an ordinance that will amend the city code, not the charter, which we can't do, it's a zero resolution, and then adopt both the rules of procedure, which you talked about the last meeting, and this code of conduct. So with that, I'm going to go to executive sessions. And most of this, again, just to remind everybody, this is kind of a compilation of the codes of conduct from about a half a dozen or more municipalities that I was able to get from the Colorado Municipal League. And Shelley had provided one of those to me from Littleton. So in the executive session, and as we all know, that we had a problem last spring, and the intent of writing this section, from my point of view, is to take those codes of conduct and try to make sure that the rules regarding executive session amongst council members are clear. And also to make sure that this is consistent with the state open meetings law, so that we don't have any potential violations of the open meetings law in the future. So the first section is just the purpose, and therefore purposes of whatever is set forth in the open meetings law, I'm not trying to redefine that. They include attorney-client or other legal privileges. And that purpose, I think, hopefully Carl will be okay with it, but I might need a little bit of wordsmithing from a lawyer, city attorney's standpoint. The next one is non-disclosure, and this is obviously where we all got kind of off-base last spring. And so I took language from a couple of codes and added other wording that I thought kind of was expressing the intent of what we tried to do. And while Tony is certainly correct, and I think we talked about this last meeting, we're not intending this code to interfere in anybody's First Amendment rights. When we get into council, when we get into executive sessions, we have, in my view, a fiduciary duty to the city, not to each other, but to the city, not to violate any executive session privilege, because that's important. Otherwise, we can't have open and candid discussions within the scope of what the executive session is about. I'll get to that in a minute. So basically, what this says is they're confidential, no disclosures can be made without the permission of the entire council, which can only be given in an open meeting of council, which is consistent with the open meetings law. Council members may not disclose any persons, and I just kind of defined those. And I'm open for, if I miss something or think something needs to be included, spouses, friends, family, residents, and other persons, any confidential information that we get in an executive session. So, you know, I can't go to my city if I had such a thing and talk about that, about what we talked about in executive session. This is kind of consistent with, I was trying to look at the, looked at the professional rules of conduct for lawyers, because obviously attorney-client privileges, the sacred thing there, and try to come up with something that worked. And I'm open to comments on that section, I'll just stop at that point before we get into waiver confidentiality.
I guess I would say, Charlie, I don't think we need to spell out, I think if we just say, a council may not disclose to any persons any confidential communication, whether or not received in an executive session. Maybe there's a reason to outline all those people, but, you know, when you say may not, including but not limited to, why don't we just make it simple and just say, you are not allowed to, period?
Thoughts, other council members?
Is this, this is also covered already in our code, is that correct with, in regards to executive session?
It's a little bit different, Carl, by the way, and then this versus the code.
Yeah, there's, I mean, the code does address it, I mean, I guess I view this, them as two different things. Like the code isn't, you know, kind of tablets handed down, it can be modified based on this. And I look at this as more of a policy document, and frankly, something that is an incoming council member, you could sit down and look at and get some guidance on what the expectations were in your role. And so from that standpoint, I think to the extent, you know, that it helps clarify that, I think that's fine. You know, the only caveat I would probably add on to it, sorry, I need to scroll here for a second. Is, and I guess we address it in C, is that the council can always waive that executive session privilege, but that's an open vote in an open meeting by a majority, so.
That's that sentence above what Jonathan was just putting in, because I came up with some other code or some other language I picked up, so. And I don't, I don't know, I don't know if it lists the people or not, I don't, I don't care, I just, I tend to sometimes be more verbose than I need to be, but.
Based on clarity, if that's the intent of this document, then I don't see a problem with giving an example like that, saying not limited to these people. You know, if we're looking at this as a document, so that it kind of gives more detail or explanation to what might be in the code. So I'd be fine with having that information, I'd be fine either way, actually. But I do, if I remember back to being a new counselor, anything that gave me some clarity was helpful.
Shelley, or anybody else, any other thought on?
Hi, Shelley.
Hi, everybody, sorry I was a little bit late there. I'm okay with what I read in the executive session portion.
Okay, all right. Then in paragraph C, somebody else said in the comment, I'll kind of move through, Ingrid, did you feel one way or the other?
You know, this is all stuff where I feel like, to kind of reiterate what Paula said, this was a tool for me to kind of have a better understanding. Now, the nuances of it, and maybe the past historical application of it, that's, I'm not part of that. But for me, it actually has been a somewhat guiding tool to understand what is and what is not acceptable. Or optimistically so, go ahead.
I was going to say, Ingrid, I think I'm the most curious about your opinion on these things, being a brand-new member of council, of how this hits you as somebody who's kind of just walking into this job of like, wow, that feels a little good, bad, you know? So please speak up any, anytime, as always.
Ultimately, for me, I'm, I'll be honest, I'm not looking at it, nor do I read anything in it that says you'll be tarred and feathered if you violate any of these things. Rather, I read it as a guiding document, that, you know, a format of a best-case scenario, an expectation of sorts. And so when I interpret it as that, it just gives me some guiding highlights in a bit of a form, which I appreciate. So.
Mr. Mayor, when Ingrid is done.
I will say, though, I understand and I appreciate Counselor Hershey's comments, because I think that it, it gives the, my dog keeps jumping up and down, making my computer bounce. But it makes me understand, you know, his concerns, I can, I can appreciate them. But ultimately, I guess maybe, and maybe I need clarity from Carl, is, you know, what are the implications if any of these are violated?
Well, I think that, yeah, Carl, if you want to jump in, I think we're going to get to that section, maybe, at some point, so.
I guess what I would say, and I think Tony has something he wanted to say, I'm not sure.
Yeah, go ahead, Tony.
Yeah, I'll answer Ingrid's question. The only person that you answer to are the people of Glenwood Springs. There is no, you don't work for the mayor, you don't work for the staff, you work for the people, and only they can remove you unless you die or move away. So this is a waste of time, so that's your answer.
And respectfully, Counselor Hershey has a version of an answer. And I appreciate that, although it's not the complete answer to what the parameters on this are. Certainly, under the charter, you can't be removed for your behavior from city council. And I know that Counselor Hershey is very focused on that one sort of event, if you will. But the case law is fairly clear that there are political consequences to your behavior. And that if an elected body wants to take action related to those political consequences, it is, has a fair degree of latitude to do that. Things like censure have been found to be appropriate and acceptable for a violation of a code of ethics. Relatively recent case out of Wyoming on that. So there are, you know, there are consequences. You might be removed from sitting on appointed boards and commissions, that has nothing to do with your authority under the charter, that's a mayoral appointment. So there are potential consequences in there. Say if Shelley did something, or Jonathan did something particularly egregious, the council could always remove them as mayor or mayor pro temp. Those are the political consequences of that behavior. And that certainly is not volitive under current case law of your First Amendment rights. That's simply a political consequence of whatever you did. So that's kind of the guardrails.
Okay, thank you, and Ingrid, I agree with Jonathan, your view of these, if you read through this code of conduct today, I hope you kind of understand, at least from Willman's perspective, what the rules are. Again, it's only my perspective with the, up of the committee. And I tried to, you know, add anything or take into account this, the committee wanted to put in, without putting my personal thoughts in. I would just note that you kind of follow up with Carl's, that the last sentence, paragraph B, is a violation of fiduciary duty, and that's a maybe more of a legal term than I could, than I should use, and maybe a little word in. But basically, when I talk to my clients about a fiduciary duty, it's a duty you owe, because you, we're here as representatives, as Tony mentioned, we're here as representatives of the city. And we can't, as representatives of the city, do something that would be a violation of our duty to the city, not to other council members, but to the city. And so it's my view, if you go out and talk about what happens in executive session, you'd be violating the fiduciary duty. So I think that's something that probably since I added the codes that I reviewed, and Carl may determine that's not an appropriate statement, but we can work on that in the next draft after I give him a revised draft, Carl?
And I think that would be appropriate. I mean, the other area that there is clear statutory authority is under the, in actually constitutional authority conflict of interest. And that may be an area where we also need to, you know, that we may want to revisit the code. We have our own conflict of interest provisions in the code, there are slightly different ones in the state statute. But that really goes oftentimes to that question of fiduciary, fiduciary duty that Charlie is talking about. I think for now, I mean, I think it's just, it's, I think everybody understands what the difference is between a consequence and say, finding somebody or doing things like that, which, you know, likely does have the potential effect of chilling free speech. Although, you know, we as attorneys have to be extremely careful, because actually, we can, we can find ourselves in that position by threatening to sue as well. We can have that impact of chilling free speech. And so, you know, it's a balancing point there, for sure.
Okay, so I'm going to move on, somebody else has something there, I'm trying to keep this running, get us, hopefully get this out here by 5:30, I have a problem. Waiver confidentiality, again, this is pretty much right out of the open meetings law, but get Carl correct if I'm wrong in that, but it's been a while since I drafted. But Carl mentioned this already, you can't, I can't go out and talk about this, because I can't waive that attorney-client privilege as one member of a body, this would be true if I was representing a corporation, and there's several members of the board of directors that I answer to, I can't go out and, or as a member of the board of directors, and talk about what happened in executive session, because I don't have the right to waive that privilege. Only us as a body have a right to waive a confidential privilege of any kind. Then in D, again, because this kind of arose, and I tried to word this carefully, but this kind of arose also out of the issues of last spring, and that is the scope of executive sessions, and this again is in the open meetings law. You have to announce the purpose of the executive session, and I think Carl could correct it wrong, but I think there's enough specificity that the public knows what you're talking about without revealing the content of what that discussion will be.
That's, that's exactly it, and we're going to, you know, if we ever, when, you know, likely, maybe in late spring, when we start meeting in person again, and I think we can move back to where we occasionally have those executive sessions. You know, I'm a huge believer that you, that level of specificity, you really need to get as close to the edge of divulging privileged information as you possibly can to provide a lot of detail to the public. You will see there are some elected bodies in the county that probably don't do that as clearly as, as we do, or some other jurisdictions do, which is too bad. But the other thing that I would say about executive sessions is that, and just, it's a good moment to talk about it here, is that if in the course of a regular meeting, even though we don't have an executive session scheduled, if there is an issue that comes up that you need advice from your attorney on in that moment, you can call an executive session in the middle of the meeting if you need to. And it's something that I historically tried very hard not to have happen, but I did want to raise that, that if you, if you feel yourself bumping up against something that you feel like you really need to talk to, talk to me as your attorney or whoever's staffing you that evening about, it's, it's something that we can certainly do. It's a little unusual, but we can, in fact, do that. The one place that I wouldn't advise that is in the middle of a land use hearing. But other than that, unless there is a, really an issue, and usually it's me identifying that issue that I need to talk to you guys about. So just keep that in mind. Not to be used on a regular basis, but certainly an option that's always available to you.
Paula, any question?
So reading through this, and it kind of reminded me of this with the scope of executive sessions, Charlie. When we were kind of discussing this earlier, and it wasn't last, in our last meeting, but before that, I had mentioned that sometimes we walked into these executive sessions, and there's a lot going on, and people are reading us in, and there's a lot, people aren't seated. And is there a way to address the decorum of when you're in executive session, we don't even start it till we're all seated, hate to say it, but, you know, paying attention and ready to be there, just like we would at the beginning of a city council meeting? And I don't know if that's something we can address or just agree on, because I think that was part of the problem in the spring, there was a lot happening. And we thought we had read some stuff in there, and we hadn't, and I had just seen that in live experience in previous sessions, that we're just not, we're not like, right at the beginning of these.
Yeah, I think that's a great point, Paula, and I think it's something that maybe it's more even beyond this sort of code of conduct or a code of ethics. It's maybe something that even the mayor and the mayor pro temp and I can sit down and work on, as we get back to that point about, you know, how we launch meetings, whether it's a work session or an open meeting, or an executive session, is really kind of critical. Because you're exactly right, a lot's going on, and, you know, the spring, we found the limitations of how Zoom records with the little yellow box around you and things like that. So I think that's a very valid point.
And Paula, what I, I'm just thinking, I wrote a comment here, I might add something generic here, we'll see how it flies, but something that decorum in regular council meetings applies during executive sessions as well, or something like that, maybe that, that's a good comment. So I made a comment to myself, I'll look at that wording, that it helps, okay. The last thing under executive sessions is a duty to limit the scope. And this is something that frankly, I wrote because of what happened last spring. There was issues about whether or not we got outside the scope of the purpose of the meeting that was called last spring. And if that's going on, I think we all have an affirmative duty as a council member to say, wait a minute, this wasn't one of the announced purposes, so we want to do this, either we got to go back out in an open meeting and announce that we're going to be talking about this, or we got to delay that until the next meeting of council, whether it's a regular meeting or a special meeting. But I think we all have a duty to say, you can't just sit on your hands and say, oh, I'm not, I'm going to talk about it, and then later argue that you're outside the scope. You can do that, but I just don't think it's a good process for us to do in a, in a scope of meeting. So again, I may have overstepped, but it just seemed to me that we all have that duty. And again, as this aspirational concept, we ought to have that as kind of one of those rules of thumb, as Ingrid was talking about. It kind of lets everybody know that this is what we're trying to do.
And we have language every time we read ourselves in that, that basically says that. And I think your language, I mean, I, Charlie, I think having it in here as a guidance document is great, but then when we also say, you know, it's been a while since I've read us into a meeting, but it does say, if I get off topic, please, anybody, correct me. So we all have an individual and a joint responsibility to keep us on task. And so, you know, sometimes we have all collectively failed at that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, and I think, I forgot, Jonathan, you're right, that is in that opening, the old opening thing you used to read, so. What you've got to be able to do in less than 30 seconds, as I recall.
The micro machine.
Any questions about that? All right, so. Section seven, remedy shakes to revise the code of conduct. So Carl's already kind of opened this up, and he and I exchanged a couple of emails before we came into the meeting, just, but I think we need to understand that we have real limits, what we can do as a council to our other council members. These ideas were a compilation of ideas that other councils have used and ideas presented to the committee by one or more of the members. So I'm going to leave it at that.
I guess what I'd suggest on this, Charlie, is that maybe this is an area where I do most of the drafting. And I can, I can come back with what is consistent with current First Amendment law. And like I said, I mean, it mostly runs to the political consequences. Things, you know, censure is a classic example of it, it's a political statement, it has no lasting consequence, it's not a fine, it, you know? But it is a, it is a statement by the body regarding whatever. So, you know, that, or acknowledging that the mayor, you know, may choose to reassign committee assignments. That's, you know, a power granted in the, in the charter and the code to the mayor, and frankly, it is a political power. And so just acknowledging those potential consequences, I think, is probably the limit of what we should include in here.
Maybe it's just, Carl, as you kind of take this with the committee, and I'm not going to say this is a unanimous vote of the committee, but this is the ideas the committee had, and you get an idea of what they are, and if you can give us, well, you had these things, but these are your real options. And if you want to do this, this is your option, how you can do that, but you can't do this.
Right.
Does that make sense to everybody in council?
Yeah, I would appreciate maybe a red line, or having this come back before us with a lot of Carl's hand on it, and say, here's why this isn't good, here's why we can, here's some additional remedies. And maybe we have that somewhere, but I'm just looking at the, a not-read marked-up draft, so.
No, you don't, we'd kind of, the kind of the path we were on was to get through this discussion of the whole council before I started mucking about, so.
Gotcha, Paula, go ahead, you had your hand up.
And then the last section is.
Charlie, Paula has a question.
Oh, sorry.
Um, yeah, not so much a question, but really kind of addressing that, you know, I appreciate what Carl's saying. I'm hesitant to support a document that has quote-unquote punishments in it, that, you know, have no bite, number one. And number two, exacerbates the situation. I do feel like this document provides clarity and an outline for us all, which I think is important. But I do want to make sure that, you know, if there's repercussions, there are repercussions that we really can't address, and not just to, I don't want to end up in a situation, as we did last spring, where it became a little bit of a media circus. Really, what the intent is, is to be able to run a good meeting and have adequate discussions during a meeting, and that should be embraced anyways, that should be embraced as soon as we raised our hand and had an oath. So I'm just, I'm just saying that I just want to be very careful on how we address what those repercussions are. And I appreciate the fact that Carl is going to take a look at this and give us some good ideas.
Thanks, Paula, Ingrid, I see your hand, can I just jump in real quick and just riff on a little bit of what Paula said? And I talked to Paula about that, that concern before, and at least, you know, Carl, for your contemplation when you're looking at this, I don't think we should be fining people for being slightly passionate, or greatly passionate, or even rude, or a lot rude. But I think that there's, there's two things here, there's the meeting, you know, we've, I remember when I. I remember when I got on council, you know, there was a counselor once that like literally stood up and banged his fist on the table, called me a socialist, and it was, it was really out of, it was really, it wasn't great. And I would have really appreciated the presiding officer at the time, like saying, you know, we're going to take a five minute break and calm everybody down, come back. And if that counselor had not been able to calm down, then I would have thought either we, one, cancel the meeting or like just gavel the meeting down and just be done until that one person can, you know, not be so passionate. Or, you know, I do believe there's, there's either language in this or language in the code of where we could take a vote and remove that person and to say, listen, if you can't calm down, if you are going to gunk up the works, we have the ability to remove you from this meeting because you're being so counterproductive. It, I would rather, if it's towards the end of the meeting, just call the meeting to an end and reconvene a special meeting personally. But I'm also looking at this document, just from a presiding officer standpoint of, you know, there's a lot of the mayor shall or the mayor can, and I would rather have limits and on what those guidance is. And so like if somebody's being pretty distracting, or if I'm being distracted, or if I'm, you know, agreeing with that person who's being distracting and I'm not gabbling that person down with enough vigor, then somebody should be able to have a path to bring that to my attention and to request a vote to either adjourn for a break or to remove that person from, from that meeting. And I don't know if we have the possibility or the ability to do that. I think the other thing that I'm looking for as well out of this, so it's like, as far as like, you know, the takey tax swear jar, that's not, that's not something I care about. But the one thing I would say is, you know, we are elected to serve the people and serving the people means attending work sessions, it's boards and commissions, it's meetings. We all do a ton of stuff outside of that direct thing, but if we're not going to go to boards and commissions and work sessions and just skip stuff and not do things we don't want to do, and I have a number of examples of people I've seen on this council, not this specific council, but council I've served on and other councils, of, you know, that's, that's crappy. At the end of the day, we're not volunteers, we do get paid by the people, the taxpayers. And if you're not here, if you're not participating, then why are the taxpayers paying you money to do that? I think that is a fiduciary, goes to the fiduciary responsibility. And so I don't know, again, not for behavior, but for performance, for actually showing up and doing your job. If you're not going to do that, then, you know, I don't think the taxpayer should be on the hook to support you. Go ahead, Carl and Ingrid, I want to come back to you.
I would just say real, real briefly, the only required attendance is at the regular meetings, based on a regular or a special meeting that is called underneath the charter. So if somebody wants to blow all the other stuff off and come in ill-prepared or whatever, you know, there's not a lot that you all can do about that. It's unfortunate. And certainly over, you know, 20 years, I've seen a wide variety of things along those lines. So I will take a look, I understand what your, your desire is, and I also can think about it from the standpoint of the presiding officer, but I want to hear from Ingrid.
Really, I'm just beginning to say that when I saw the code of conduct dialogue, I'm on other boards and commissions, I'm on other groups that have a code of conduct in the agenda. And so to see it, I have read it, you know, as part of just an introduction to whatever organization. And ultimately, I read it as a format of commitment and just a general sense of understanding that I'm there for a purpose. And when I read, you know, when I read through this, I see that my purpose is to benefit the people in the city of Blenwood. So I don't, you know, the code of conduct, generally speaking, is just a guide for me to be well behaved and be constructive so that ultimately the goals can be met and we can do service to our community. I, that Abraham Lincoln quote, whatever you are, be a good one. It's both in meetings, but it's also in our approach to how we conduct business outside of. And, and yes, an elected official could come in and choose not to have good behavior, but that's not the oath that I took, even though I was just recently appointed and not actually elected. So for me, and I think that we all need to remove ego and attitude from even the dialogue of what you want another person to do and what another person doesn't want to have to agree to do, and say, what is for the best of the people and the community that we committed to? That's my pontification for the evening, but you know, that really kind of, kind of encapsulates how I feel about seeing this. So. And I'll silence my phone at that.
Blame Charlie.
All right.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's my fault, I'll take a vote responsibility. I, the only thing, only comment I want to add to, to kind of what the discussion has been, is I agree that this is an aspirational goal and hopefully it gets us acting toward each other and doing our jobs in an appropriate way. But, you know, I would hope that something we can have in there, that's where I kind of dovetail what Jonathan said, I don't know what it is, but something says, if you don't do this, there's got to be some consequence, and hopefully it's something that's reasonable, but something that you can't just say, yeah, sure, there's code of conduct, but I don't have to follow because you can't do anything to me. And I don't know any way I should do it, I doubt if any way I should do that. I think we're all good, responsible people at this council, and maybe that'd be true of any council, but it's just like, if I drive too fast, I'm going to get a speeding ticket, I'm going to have to pay a fine. And so I think there, that's my view. I'm not necessarily door seat or suggesting any of these things or any of these remedies and sanctions, I just kind of put a compilation together, again, of things that other cities have used and things that some of the members of the committee had wanted to put in there. So I don't myself, Tony, your soapbox tonight.
And I respectfully disagree with Mr. Hanlon. You know, I understand what he's talking about, political sanctions, the mayor can do whatever he wants. Steve Davis isn't here right now, he doesn't have to be here, he doesn't have to go to a board meeting, but back in the spring, six of you, when you asked me to resign, included me not attending board meetings as part of why I should resign, but that's up to the people. And that's been my only point. And you keep, you know, I'll keep going back into this until I'm blue in the face, that the people elected you, and really, the only mechanism to remove anybody from here is via recall and via the vote. Or, hey, Tony was a terrible city councilman, he wasn't prepared, he didn't go to any work sessions, when he did show up, he, he called people names, he was a jerk, then, then here's the solution, don't vote for him. I mean, I think we just saw that in a presidential election where a lot of people voted against somebody because they felt his behavior was inappropriate. So that's my position. Now, I agree with Carl that like, there could be some political consequences, you guys can issue a censor, you can ask me to resign, you can write me a mean letter, but if there's any sort of financial penalty or any other penalty, I think you're facing a problem with litigation. And I'm not threatening to sue anybody, Carl, so please don't accuse me of that, but I'm saying that's going to be what happens if you violate somebody's First Amendment rights, or you say, well, because you were rude, now we're making you leave the meeting, you can't do that. That's my position, unless I guess I was obstreperous or something and you had to call the sergeant of arms to physically remove me, but if I just won't, if I'm just being nasty, I just don't see that's a reason for removal, except by the people and the voters. So that's my soapbox. Thank you, Charlie.
Well, and, and I'll just say that I don't think that this is, it's not, this isn't the Tony document, this isn't the, because Steve Davis isn't here, this isn't the Steve Davis document or the Todd Leahy document, but.
You keep saying that, Mr. Mayor, but we keep talking about this incident in the spring, which Paula just talked about, which you just talked about, and you're like, well, you know, you guys brought the bad press on yourself, nobody would have known about any of this, I told you not to do it, but you did, which was your right, but it is kind of the Tony document, and it kind of is the Steve document, when you keep talking about people not attending work sessions. So in two years from now, maybe it'll be the Ingrid Wusso document, I don't know. You guys are going to do what you want to do, I'm just not supporting it.
So, could I finish my statement?
Of course you may.
Thank you. I didn't want to mention that what happened in the spring, I've never mentioned that, Charlie mentioned it, Paula did, but you guys, I don't think Shelley's said a word yet, and I don't think Ingrid mentioned anything about the spring yet. So let's just bring it down a little bit and, and, you know, that was an example, but there's plenty of other examples. I just wanted to correct the record, go ahead, Shelley.
And I'm going to just say, I know Shelley's got her hand up or did, but I'm going to say, Tony, when I mentioned the spring, it wasn't because Tony did something wrong in the spring, that's not my intent of that. My intent is, if we have a problem and there's a way to resolve it by setting up some guidance, I don't care what the damn problem is. So I apologize, I wasn't, if you took that as, this is about Tony, it isn't, it's, it's, I saw that what happened among all seven of us in the spring was a problem. And, and I don't want to ever see that happen again, at least I'm on council, if we can write things that will at least try to inhibit the ability to get into that problem area, I think that's a better way to do things.
And I appreciate that, Charlie, thank you. But Shelley, and I know Shelley's going to talk right now, but, you know, what happened in the spring, I, I, I didn't do anything wrong, and that's my position, you guys disagreed, the people agreed, so, and if they want to do a recall because of what happened in the spring, apparently that didn't happen, if I run for reelection in a couple of years, that would probably be a big issue. But what I'm keep saying is it's up to the people who I work for. And I agree with you, Charlie, and I appreciate what you're saying, thank you.
Okay, is it my turn?
You took your hand down, but I assume you.
I think Jonathan took it down.
I did.
I guess, you know, my feeling on this for remedies is, I have a couple of comments. First, I'll jump to, oh dear, I think it's number F. And I, and there's another place in the code that was in my previous comments from last time that I sent to you, Charlie.
Yeah.
This idea of trying to control council member behaving, behavior outside of a meeting, I have a hard time with that.
No, Shelley.
I don't know if anyone else does, but.
Shelley, let me just stop you because I think we agreed last, at the last meeting, we're not going to include that. And I just had, I had got to make those changes, I have seen all your changes, which I mentioned before you got on today, but.
Okay.
I agree, I agree.
That's in one of these, right? That's in one of, it's either.
It's up above, you're right, it's been taken out.
Kind of censure, okay. So the, the other thing on that, and I, I will go back even to before last spring and before the current council was seated, I was having an ongoing issue with a couple of council members that I felt were either not following ethics or something like that. So I took it up with CML.
And I'm sorry about that, Shelley, by the way, I just want to apologize.
Well, yeah. You weren't mayor at the time, so too bad, but, but basically, what I was told by CML was that, Shelley, you're not the police of council, you know, you're, you're not, you're not the boss of council, you can't police them, that's the mayor's job. So I, I guess what, that brings me back to this whole remedies section, I'm kind of feeling like maybe the only ones we really keep in here are the ones where the mayor kind of takes a look at the situation and decides how it should be handled appropriately, and if, if they can have that conversation.
And Shelley, I don't want to interrupt, but I just, that, that's what I want as well, and I want more guidance from you all on how to do that. Because there is, at least how I read it, there's a whole lot on, on mine or any other future presiding officer shoulders to, to make determinations. And I, I don't, I don't think I am the policeman either. I think I am the person who has the gavel that, that orchestrates the meeting, but if some of these remedies, whether it be call for break or call for adjournment or whatever else, that's not financial or a free speech chilling move, then I really do want your guys' input. And so if there's mechanisms, Carl or Charlie, of like, here's how to take a vote, here's how to bring to the presiding officer's attention, a majority of, like, those kind of things, I don't have those guardrails or that guidance right now. And I think any future presiding officer, mayor, mayor pro tem should have that in their tool bag to understand, not, not being an expert in Robert's Rules of Order, but if we're all on the same page of, here's what we expect, and this is how it's done, then that would be incredibly helpful to me.
And I know Paula's got her hand up, but I'll just come in briefly, what you said, Jonathan, the rules of procedure, which we talked about the last meeting, do define a lot of those things. And as Carl and I worked through the next draft of this, or I give him my, my revision from the last draft, and Carl then takes it to the legal city attorney level, I think that, I think it is clear if you look at those two, that's why I put the two documents, they kind of join together to some level. Paula, I'm sorry, I interject ahead of you.
Go ahead, Paul.
First, I wanted to make sure that Shelley was done. We took one topic that she was speaking to, and I didn't know if she had additional ones that you wanted to.
Well, thanks, Paula. No, that was my topic, I'll add one caveat, though. The only problem is that if the mayor is part of the problem that you're having with council, then that creates a whole different thing.
And I think, I think there's some, sorry, interrupted, because I think there's something that rules of procedure that talks about that, if I remember, it's been, well, again, since I looked at Shelley, but I thought about that and tried to include that in the rules of procedure rather than the code of conduct, but we might have to bring those two back together a little bit here, and I hear what you guys are saying, so.
Okay.
Sorry.
What I was going to speak to, and this goes a little bit to what Tony was saying when he said I brought up last spring, is I don't think I was clear, I'm not an advocate of punishment for resolving things, whether reading through here with the $25 fine or asking a council person to resign, you know, I understand, you know, right, you know, because we've discussed it now in previous meetings, that we can't ask a council person to resign, and, and I hope Tony realizes that we all understand this at that point. And I feel a little bit, and I think when, as Jonathan said, we had talked about this a little earlier today, I feel a bit sometimes when we throw these things like, you're going to get fined for this, or do this, or do that, that we can't really do, is a little bit like, you know, when I was a kid and my dad said, if you don't behave yourself, you're going to walk home, you know, he's not going to put me out of the car 25 miles from home and make me walk home, he's just not going to do it. And so I just want to be careful how we address this and not make this punishment oriented, even though I understand from what you're saying, Charlie, you do have to have some sense of repercussion, but how do we do that? Let's just, you know, fine tune that.
Thank you, that clarifies, I appreciate what you said, and that certainly clarifies.
Great, thank you. And Tony, I did not mean to infer back to the spring about you.
I appreciate that, I actually sort of disagree with you, I think you can ask me to resign, I think you could do a lot of things, but you can't make somebody resign because they violate this code of conduct, was my point, thank you.
Okay. Anything else on sanctions and otherwise, I think we'll leave that to next draft? I put the last section in just because I found this personal expectation as a separate document, and I think at least one or maybe two of the codes I looked at, and I thought, I thought it was a nice kind of summary, it's probably contained in a lot of the code of conduct provisions, but I thought it was a nice summary of expectations that we should have for ourselves. Whether we include the code of conduct or not, I don't, I'm not wedded to, but other than that, I don't have anything to say about section seven or eight, I guess it is.
You know, the only thing I'd have to say about it, Charlie, is, and maybe I'm too sensitive because Tony's been working the refs, but I think under A5, I will follow and abide by this code of conduct and agree to resign my office upon egregious violations of this code of conduct. I think that kind of gets to where Paula was, you know, saying, you know, if we're going, and I don't, I don't, somebody's punishment is another person's accountability. And so I think this is an accountability and an expectation document, not a punishment thing. And so that specific item on number five, I will agree to resign my office upon egregious violations, one who, who, I mean, I guess the majority of council could decide this is egregious, but I don't think asking somebody to agree to resign is something that, it feels a little strong for me, personally.
Good, it's great, I don't know where I got that from, I don't know if that was my idea or that was something that came out of somebody else's, but good comment, Jonathan. Any other thoughts on the personal expectation document? Again, I don't even think I've read this section since, since July or August, so.
My only thought on it, Charlie, was I felt like it, it was all covered. I mean, if this was our standalone document, kind of our, our code of conduct, then I would say, great, but I think I felt like it's pretty much covered in the three Rs above, and that it, at this point, it's maybe a redundancy that I thought we could do without it.
And I fully agree that it's covered, I, but I throw it in just so we could all look at it.
Okay.
Paula?
I'm really going to echo Shelley a little bit, you know, I, I think it's fine to have it in there, I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with, you know, printing it out and signing it, and it just, I feel like when we look at this code of. And it just, I feel like when we look at this code of conduct, um, you know, the, that kind of gives you an outline of everything we've already discussed before. So it is a little bit, um, what we've done already.
And I guess I would say, yeah, it's, it does repeat the three Rs. So either ditched the three Rs and adopted this as kind of the preamble or I guess ditch this or incorporate the two things. But I, I think we're, we're kind of hitting it a lot.
Okay. I appreciate that. And I tend to agree, so. But again, I just, because I thought it was, it's a nice statement. And, you know, I thought it was something that at least you guys could bring to your attention that this kind of thing exists out there, so.
I, I actually prefer it more than the three Rs, but.
Okay.
That's just, that's his personal preference.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that, so.
Ingrid. You're muted, Ingrid.
Um, I think this last, this last section actually incorporates so much in a really concise way. I, I actually prefer it not to say that I don't, you know, there, there is definitely, um, value to the, the previous sections, but this is pretty concise. So either one or the other, or a, a mutation of, of them both, um, is probably where I would.
Okay.
Yeah. Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. That's why I brought it up the way I did, so.
Yeah, great.
Who's using a dial-up connection?
I, I don't know what that is.
Anybody else hear that?
Yeah, no, I, I, that was, actually, that came from my computer. So I was looking to see if it was going to continue to run, so. Um, all right, I don't have anything else then. I think, uh, I have guidance and what I will do, I guess, with the council's blessing is I will take the comments. And Shelley, um, I looked at your comments. I don't know if you saw my email, I think late Saturday, but I looked at your comments. There's some really good, uh, wordsmithing in there. The one thing you ask, I'll just address is if we have the rules of procedure, should we eliminate Robert's rules? In my view is yes, but I'll talk to Carl about that. And I'll make sure I share your comments with Carl as well, so he's got those independently, but.
Okay. And I had, I had asked that last time, and I appreciate your, all your work on that because I think you guys did explain that we would, that would take precedence then over Robert's rules. And I'm okay with that because it's streamlined and it's more in line with actually what we do during the meetings, so.
Oh, and it makes a whole lot easier to run a meeting and try to figure out. I, I guarantee if I got into Robert's rules of order, I could use them into my great benefit because I used to be master at them.
Okay.
But that's, that's my.
Okay.
All right. So I appreciate everybody. Thanks for the comments. I will do a, a redraft of these based on the comments I've written as we go through them. I'll get those to Carl. And then, uh, Carl, I guess we can talk about procedure, if that's okay with you guys, and try to come back to something that incorporates what we agreed to and, and highlights areas. Yes, Mr. Mayor, my suggestion would be, is, because we don't want, as long as it's all fresh in our minds, we should try to get that to the, come back to council meeting for a real brief work session or comment. And then it's okay, uh, to drive Carl to draft an ordinance or you want us to go right to ordinance or resolution.
You know, I feel like we've taken the last two, um, you know, we've had two, at least two work sessions recently. And then we've had subcommittee meetings and we've had another work. I, I feel like we're there and I think you and Carl probably have enough comments and taken enough notes. I, I would be comfortable, these are our open sessions. I, I would be comfortable coming back, depending on what our agenda looks like at the first meeting in December. If it has to be the second meeting, I, I agree, let's keep it fresh in our minds. Let's not let it go past the holidays. And, uh, I, I would like to have this as a discussion item on the regular agenda for a first reading where we can look at all the changes, obviously in advance. We can ask a few clarifying questions, but I feel like we're 95% of the way there. We don't need to have another hour-long work session because if we give ourselves an hour, we will take it. So let's put it on the agenda. Let's put it for a 15-minute conversation. If there's some last minute tweaks, we also have second reading that we can clarify those few things and Carl can wordsmith it and workshop it a little bit. And then let's pass it to the second meeting in December and call it a holiday.
That's my preference, too.
So my suggestion, Mr. Mayor, given what you said, is I think it'd be great to bring the first meeting council, but that really makes it due next Wednesday, given Thursday's.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Just, two weeks is the next council meeting. Next Thursday is, is, is Thanksgiving. I think that's unrealistic to ask Carl's office. I, I could certainly get in my changes sometime this weekend.
Let's see if we get there or not. Charlie, if you get this, I mean, um, you know, this week or by the end of the weekend, I will probably be able to turn it by the end of day, end of day Tuesday.
Okay. I'll get it to you by Monday morning, Carl. I don't know that I get to them tomorrow.
And just, just for, you know, reference, I, I think tonight I'm going to propose that we cancel Thanksgiving, period. So there's really not going to be Thanksgiving. Anybody has to worry about in Glumwood Spring.
But then Carl and I will be both working in Thanksgiving, so.
If you would, that, that actually makes my, frees up my week a lot with Thanksgiving. And it also gives me more time to get stuff into the packet, so thanks.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're welcome. Uh, everybody who doesn't want to get COVID, you're welcome. Thanksgiving, we can, we can take a vote on it later.
Trying to make us all more popular, right?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
That's Orwellian, Mr. Mayor. Isn't that what I heard today?
Yes.
From the White House.
All right. Is there anything else for the?
And Mr. Mayor, as far as taking time, I want you to know that I got us out of here in an hour, not in an hour and a half.
Hey, you know what? Good on you. All right. Let's, let's take that hour and 15 minutes. We'll come back at, uh, 6:10, we'll jump back on here. Thanks, everybody.